For which stands one nation, united by God. In the book for liberty and justice.
We got approval of the October 20th in 24 minutes?
Noted, approved minutes.
I'm sorry. Call in favor?
Aye.
Approval vouchers?
Vouchers, as often, general fund, two forty, two hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and six feet cents. Water eighty-one thousand three hundred thirty dollars and ninety-one cents. Sewer fifty-six thousand fifty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Capital thirty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. I move that they be approved as often.
And on second? Call in favor?
Aye.
I will say one thing, you know, Dan, one reason the general fund is so high is we, this is the month we pay our peer state retirement for the year, and that's...
Yeah, I didn't bring it up because I heard him say it in the office today, and I said, huh, it is what it is.
It's about half of that number, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's made by the fifteenth to get a discount.
Really?
Mm-hmm. We should about that, we have to on this one.
Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project, if you have anything you want to...
I really don't have much stuff in on that now, Joe.
I do.
Yeah, the railroad's completed.
Okay, yeah, the railroad's all done, did you get, did we get?
I haven't gotten any from them, except that, that memo that we had from the railroad to them, and I haven't received anything back yet.
Okay, so yeah, we're just waiting on them to give us their final bill for the rails, rail replacement, and that's the last bill we need to turn back the project to EFC.
Turn the app. It is a jet ski paradise. And for the sake of the presence of that community, I've discussed this with Paul, and somehow we will correct that because it's just that exception. That's all I'm saying.
Hopefully we'll have the long-term bonding on this by the middle of December, we done with that.
Yes.
Move on to our other projects. Bees Two Waste Water Treatment Plant, I'll create it.
SC Spencer has been on site this last, oh, about month or so, working on the site-related electrical work. They've been moving along, they've completed a good portion of conduits. It should be done with their site-related work by the end of the year. We don't really have anything yet from North Country Contractors on when they're going to start, so I suspect they're probably not going to begin anything on their portion until spring.
I know we were kicking around, trying to find US-made steel for rebar, you know, where they stand with that?
Yeah, something like that got resolved, it looked like SCC found somebody, I think out of Washington or something, that was able to manufacture this, so that sounds like that waiver, it didn't need it anymore.
I know they, EFC came back with some possibilities, and I know you sent them off, I just wondered.
Yeah, I think a couple of days ago, Tina at their office had responded, said they found somebody, if you don't have an email, you'll all forward it over to them.
I just, no matter what you work on nowadays, seems all materials getting tough to find, so...
Definitely. I also wanted to know that we'll be doing the groundbreaking ceremony next week, the twenty-third at eleven o'clock at the wastewater plant. Obviously, all the board members are all at the time, and...
What date, that's next week?
Yep.
Next Tuesday.
I'll be out of town.
That's it on that?
What time you say, Kevin?
Eleven o'clock. And Joe, if you want to, if you want to say, like, speak or say any words at the ceremony, or if any of the other board members want to, let, let our office know, I, girl, our office is organizing all that, so...
Groundwater Development Project.
So we had a meeting with Department of Health last month to discuss their permits. As you know, Joe, there's been some significant...
Back and forth, yeah.
Significant changes to projects that are going to need to, significant changes to design that are going to need to happen personally from then beginning. So we're kind of in the process with blue lines.
Are you thinking it still can go out a bit by January, or not?
I, I would hope so, by, by January time, I, it definitely puts back a little bit, but we're looking forward, and, and we're definitely going to still try to target that date.
LED Street Lighting. Do you want to give the information you got, Paul? I know you've been talking with the contractor.
Just that the contractor is going to bring his, his box trailers in for storage and stuff, supposedly by the end of the week. From what I was told by them, was that they're going to start with Carthage to West Carthage, and then be here. Well, we're going to be the third ones to be done. But they're actually storing everything from Jefferson and Lewis County here at our sewer plant.
So I told Paul we should tell him he should switch, we should be first.
Yeah, because originally, talking with them, they were going to have one conics box here, one, one bucket truck, and a dumpster, and then they got a call from the contractor, and they'll bring in four conics boxes, forty by eighty, and, but, we don't want to slow the project up, so I've got some room down at the sewer plant for them, so...
May I suggest that we talk with our insurance agent, seeing how we're storing equipment that isn't ours, to make sure that there's proper insurance in case something bad happens?
I, I, that wouldn't be any different than when we were doing the Five Streets, they stored all their equipment there, they have their own insurance, so...
We want to make sure they do. We want to make sure, because I can tell you personally, I had a situation where we had a claim in my agency, where we had equipment of others within the facility, and we took a bond to cover our side. We also want to know that we've got, they've got the proper coverage, which I'm, I'm sure they do, but we should ask for certificate of insurance. Yeah, and they, I agree with you, Paul, they should do us first, seeing how, who wants to store equipment.
Yeah, that's all, it's all fenced in, it's locked in, it's at our sewer plant, and so, I don't think safety is that much concerned, we do have to check to be sure.
Other issues that could happen.
We have contractors working down there right now, that have stuff on site, so... The only other thing with the street lighting project is, I was in contact with Kevin Townsend to get the streetlights on our shirt, that's because we're, here they're probably worth a little over a thousand dollars piece. If we had a ice storm or major windstorm, so, he's taking care of that. I contacted him last week, because I hadn't seen anything yet, but he said it was in the process of recovery, so... Rezoning of Industrial Zone, different options, you want to talk on that, Tim did?
Yeah, I met with Cassandra Bill and Megan in the planning department last week briefly. Basically, we're looking at the two options, I don't know if you guys have copies of this, but I gave them, option A, option B, with some definition changes also. So the next meeting, we'd like to have Joe and basically any of the other trustees that want to join in, and Matt, back from the Tokyo Commission, to just kind of make sure we're doing this correctly. When we do that, so, and that probably will happen in December here, so that will set it up for that. And then we'll bring it back to the board.
Then after the board looks at that, then Joe has to look after that.
Yeah, Tim would be happy to be involved with that, too.
Yeah.
I worked with Matt a few years ago, and he's good.
Sewer rate increase for November twenty-twenty-two, basically, we need to schedule a public hearing for that two-and-a-half percent, so... So I'm thinking at our next board meeting in December, which I think is fifteen?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yep.
I guess we just need a motion to set public hearing for December fifteenth.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
That's at four P M.
Yes. And then the other thing, and I already talked with Paul, normally when we have an increase like this, we sit down with Craft and Dr. L, and we'll get a hold of them and discuss it. Okay, new business, craft surcharges, October twenty-twenty-one, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, need a motion to authorize...
I'll make that motion. Second.
Call in favor? Aye.
Sorry, was that for the water sewer?
What's that sewer?
I was just wondering about the water.
No, just sewer.
Thanks, Jim.
Assume, when we did that on our spreadsheet, the water really wasn't too bad, but the sewer was just awful close. Dr. L said...
I just put that craft, the craft surcharge, I was just wondering if that was for the water sewer?
Oh, that's, that's the craft surcharges, that's the sewer.
Yep.
That was the normal one.
Yep.
I mean, the water one won't pick out until the end of November.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that started yet.
Went into effect the first November.
Okay.
Budget amendments, we got general fund, water fund, sewer fund, and hopefully everybody had a copy, look to see what that's all about. We need a motion for Danielle to be able to make those amendments, modifications.
Need a motion for each, or?
Yeah, we want each.
I'll make the motion to, for the general fund budget amendments.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'll make the motion for the water fund transfer of fifteen thousand.
I'll second. Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'll make the motion for the sewer fund for fifteen thousand.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unpaid Village Tax Is Affidavit, this is what we have to sign off on every year?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we sign the warrant as issued for forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents, that each of us has to sign individually.
I'll pass it down, because here's the original.
So you got the original?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, postal insurance compliance policy. This was kind of a new one to me, and I think Danielle. Basically, what this is, is the bond for banks, dealing with the bonds for the Five Streets on the final closeout, they're looking for us to have a postal issuance compliance policy, and we didn't have one, so...
You're not alone.
So we had to get one drafted up, and then, if everybody's okay with it, we have to adopt that policy, and that's what, you should have a copy, it says adopt postal insurance compliance policy.
It pretty much just sets forth everything you have to do to keep in compliance with the tax exemptions. So it's just basically a policy that says you're going to do what you're supposed to. And I can tell you, there's nothing in here that's not required by law.
Now, I see A's and A's, we got to do this by, probably, police ball?
Yeah, I think that's, I think you could just call for a motion and really click.
Just another policy the village is going to have to have for our big projects.
Just another one you're going to have to provide when we close it down.
Somebody like to make a motion to adopt that, then?
I'll open it. I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The Village Code update, I know Tim's concerned with that, because we do have eleven or more...
Again, it's off in the, in the meeting with the, when we were working on the other with Cassian, and then I looked into it a little bit, and actually talked to the lady from General Code, just Mary Beth. If you go on our Village Code online, you'll see, right in the left-hand corner, I didn't even know that, that the new laws are right there, so there's eleven of them sitting there right now, waiting to be processed. There's actually six more that have been through by the Department of State.
They're on there now.
Are they?
Yeah.
So we have seventeen of them that really need to go in General Code to get updated. The way she talked to me is that it doesn't cost anymore to do them one at a time, although a lot of towns and villages wait until they have a few to send in, because of paperwork or whatever. But we have two that were back in two thousand nineteen, so we need to get that stuff done, I feel, and get it updated as soon as possible. Now, you can wait for this industrial zone one, but the next thing you know, there's going to be another thing you're waiting for. So, I think we need to go through the facets, it's not going to be cheap, she was going to draft another...
I was going to say, when it was only, when it was eleven, it was going to cost us twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-three to twenty-five hundred, so I'm thinking it's going to be thirty-five, I would say, of course.
I talked to Pam, too, so we budgeted over that estimate, so I think we budgeted between three thousand and thirty-five hundred. And I talked to Mary Beth today, and I think the reason we waited was because with COVID and everything last year, they didn't update it, and then, there's been so many new laws, just even since I started here a couple of months ago. So, in talking with Pam, I know, I think there's two or three more possibly in motion, so I don't know, I guess depending upon if they're going to be done by the end of the year for twenty-twenty-one or not. Our thought was maybe to do it, you know, whatever's been passed as of, say, the next meeting, December fifteenth.
That's what I'm thinking, that we should get what we got by the end of the year, and then start over.
Yeah.
That's my thinking.
And according to her, she said we can get on a schedule to do like semi-annual, so like every six months, and we can pick, like, they have different time slots, or even annually, depending upon how many codes we pass. Because she did say, if there's only one, like, new law or code change, it might not be worth it. She might suggest, like, holding off and waiting, because depending upon how much stuff has to be changed, as far as indexing and stuff, it just might not make sense. So she said that was something else, you know, to let you guys know that we can, if we do pick semi-annually, where we're going to pick whatever six-month increments we want, if we don't have enough changes, we don't have to do it. We can just bypass it and then go on to the next increment. So she did tell us, that, you know, she had talked to Tim yesterday, and she sent over the request for a quote, so I should have it, she said it might take about a week to get all of the updates done. But she's thinking we definitely should do it this year, because like he said, the last code update was twenty-nineteen, but again, probably with COVID last year and all the changes, and then this year, there were so many between manufactured homes and smoke shops or whatever, so...
Yeah, we changed a lot in the last year and a half, too.
Yeah. So if it's okay, I can get the quote from her, and then see what passes by the next board meeting, and then if we don't have any changes, we'll update everything through twenty-twenty-one, and then revisit it, I guess.
Maybe semi-annually, or get on a schedule possibly.
Yeah, so if we want to do that, she said semi-annual, basically, would either be January and July, February and August, March and September, April, October, May, November, or June and December. So it really just depends on when you want to revisit any of those things, so...
We're going to have to go along with the budget, too, right? And strive to put it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, we would have to each put it in more in budget every year, like, there's some money there now, depending where it's going to come out.
Yeah.
But you can, like I say, you know, you can find the new laws if you go up there where it says...
Yeah, I didn't realize that that day, I knew we had a lot of them sitting there, but I didn't realize they were right there on the, on the website. And then I, I can get into the state side, anybody can, and look at all the laws, the village law.
Yeah, and then I guess after talking with you, she had them all uploaded, so today they were available.
Any other questions on that? All right, the weather's getting colder, we're thinking hockey. Basically, I'm looking for a motion to authorize me to sign the contract that we have over here with the Lawwell Hockey Association, which in turn takes care of our works for the town, really taking care of our free skating at the, they're hoping to have it up and running by December third this year. Sure. Pretty much, it's the same as we do with them every year.
You just want a motion to sign the contract?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? River Area Council of Governments, or November Newsletter, anybody got any questions on that? If they do, you can ask Mickey.
Meeting was last night, right?
Yep. We had our meeting last night, and New Freeman had submitted to join Rayco, which they approved, but they wanted to join the cooperative ZBA in Ray, that one currently exists, which is all Jefferson County communities, and they already have five members, so there wasn't really room to file them in. So, basically, we're going to do, I think, a cooperative ZBA set, like, have Matt Johnson in our office to do something in general, for anybody who might be interested in, in that type of thing. So we'll be putting on like a little workshop or something like that here in the near future. But basically, New Freeman wanted to join so they could basically take advantage of being part of a Ray, or a cooperative ZBA like that, so that's where their interest is, so... Right now, they're kind of, they're approved, but it's up to them right now, if there's any other communities, I think Denmark had an interest at one point, so if they get three others, or one, one other that's interested, I give them three to create a new Rayco Cooperative ZBA, so it'll be a Rayco North Cooperative ZBA, and then like a Rayco South Cooperative ZBA.
You only need the three, not three?
Yeah, I need the three member, yep, and Denmark has expressed interest in the past, but they're going to get it neither, and now New Freeman is willing to join, but they want to be able to be part of a Rayco Cooperative ZBA, so that would give them two, so they need just one more, maybe they might want to do something like that with them. So we'll be doing that, and then, yeah, other than that, we, the LED lighting, I've already mentioned, talked about that, we'll mention that they might have three crews going. They said they're definitely going to have two crews here, maybe that's why there's so many containers, because they talked about maybe putting a third crew on, which that would help speed up the process quite a bit, so... And they're starting with Carthage, I think, next, next week, like Monday or Tuesday there, with the construction on that.
We need to get it done by the end of the month, or end of December, in order to get that grant, right? Nothing's changed on that, has it?
Well, I talked to Cassandra, she talked to D O S, it was a great area, what's considered complete, so Cassandra's basically talked to them, and, talked to them, and, and I think what come about is, you know, what's considered complete? So the project itself, the savings is based upon the construction costs, that's where your savings are, it's not your yearly savings right now, because you aren't going to have any of that. So considering that all the communities are going to be signing their contracts, you know, and, and basically they're now locked in to moving forward with the project, then you're going to consider that those construction cost savings are already going to be received, basically, because there's not going to be really any difference in the construction cost. The only difference is, if you don't use all your contingency money, you could have more savings, but that won't be able to be counted, but, so basically, it's going to go on whatever the construction costs are, I think, right now, so... That, talking to Cassandra, I think that's what they're going to do, is move forward with, with that process, and saying that it's completed, once you sign your agreement with National Grid, like your closing, once the closing is done, they're going to consider it complete, because now you're locked in for those construction costs, because the construction materials are already purchased. So that's already done, so the, the savings to her has already been realized, that...
Yeah, I mean, we signed off in October with National Grid, paid them for the lights, that's why you have an insurance company to insure them for us.
So I know she's putting in for all those county communities being completed, you know, once, once they've been signed off like that, so, I don't see any, any issue with that. And honestly, by the time the paperwork even gets filed, probably most all the communities will be done by then anyway, because the B B R is presented in January, so, so I expect that that shouldn't be an issue. And, well, other than that, I'll just mention that the Lawwell Comprehensive Plan, actually, I got an email from Elena today to put the draft of that plan up on the website, so that'll be going up on there for...
A printer, right, easier for me to sit home and read it.
Yeah, yeah.
And read it off the computer.
Oh, yeah, a lot of pages.
Hundred and fifty-one pages.
Your printer must have been smoking. So we're, so that's going to be going up, and then I'll just mention, too, like, the Community Choice Irrigation stuff that Lewis County is doing to Jules' assets, so, I know, actually, Will and Carthage have expressed interest in maybe even taking part in that, so they're interested to get more information, so, they might be also looking to work with some of the communities down here on that. And then, other than that, I, Chuck, did you want to talk about the report? I know you mentioned it earlier, so...
Ken, when it's time.
Okay, if you want to wait, I wasn't sure whether you wanted us to jump in with the report now or not, but, so, yeah, you can wait, so, that's all I got, there.
Can the report done?
Done, yes, I'm, which I can do now.
Oh, done the report, yeah, on that one already? The Double Play Community Center, the Lawwell Turkey Tribe, they hold that every Thanksgiving?
May I make a quick comment on that there? I think, I think the, it's a great idea. I have one concern, they elect to run down Ross Hill, and I think that that's a very dangerous area for them to be running in. Just from my own personal observation, maybe nobody else feels the same way, and I don't know, we can change their route a little, but it's just, you know, I don't want to see somebody get hurt. And that's just, especially coming up where we have a bad sidewalk, too, coming up about East State, that's just a bad area. I think most people are aware of this, it's done every year, it's great for those who want to participate, I'm just, I don't want to see somebody get hurt. So I don't know if Phil can discuss that with, I don't know who's in charge of it. Eric Rettler, he maybe just see if they have the same concerns, or if they've given it any thought, as an observer, I, I think that going up that hill, or coming down that hill or whatever, and then going up the other hill is just a bad area.
There's a problem, maybe they want the, the hill to, they can have to work a little bit.
Dan, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the intersections, they have people, there are people at intersections.
They do, but between the intersections, it's, that, I, I just, I can tell you, I was, people coming both ways on Ross Hill can be a pretty tricky issue, going up S T Hill, and there's no sidewalks, so... But as far as the Turkey Tribe, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
I mean, for this year, they're already moving, but I mean, I... I mean, for this year, they're already moving, but I mean, I could contact there and get my concerns, and maybe next year they could take that road off, go a different route. Do you, as far as the police, have any issues with?
No, we've never had no issues.
Oh, I mean, they've been doing it for years.
Yep.
Yep. Was that the only issue running on National Grid?
We gotta get further away from our first issue.
That's only.
As far as somebody gets hurt.
Best in a week, please, so.
Do we have to approve it? We don't have to approve it, do we?
Usually if they send it to us, and if the police department has no problems with it, usually they don't, we don't have a problem. It's just that, I don't know, sometimes they were looking on different ones and looking for pure help on intersections and things. Like the four corners when they used to have the cross up there and things. And a little correspondence from Environmental Facilities Corporation as far as the P A unit. Tell us what we. I think what this is all about, we submitted to get the P A unit paid through our grant. And they're telling us, we do have to do some things, but some of the other stuff, we don't have to deal with luckily. And we don't have to do an M W B E for all that paperwork. Did you get a copy of that, see what that was about?
Sure, I have a copy on that one, Joe.
You were or you weren't?
I don't think I was.
Do you want this copy?
So that's what that's all about. Does anybody got any questions on that? Kevin can tell you, they're constantly emailing, looking for different contract stuff, like to say, other than they might already own business or whatnot before E F C releases any of their money to us. Okay, Village Attorney, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
I just got a couple of things from both of mine here. Last meeting, we discussed, Randy was here. He wanted to replace the cameras and everything over at the police department inside now. And then the old ones that we were going to use at the D P W. We did find financing for that, those cameras, it's a little under five thousand. And so with the board, wanted us to check this. Last time, I just felt we should bring it up to the board, we did a motion to go ahead and give Randy the okay to buy them. If everybody's all right with that, you did find the financing, Laura.
I'll make that motion to finance it there.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Like I say, it's, uh, the old interior ones, uh, they said if we got them under the E's, out of the frame, they can be used outside, so we've got a few places around D P W we're thinking of using them. The old ones. But the other problem with, uh, with Randy's setup, Phil might be able to explain it whether me, but the state, what they're requiring now on, uh, when stuff's being videoed, and, uh, basically what we have over there right now is outdated, it's not compatible. So if we have to for some upgrade, we should upgrade so it's compatible with the state stuff. And the only other thing is, I haven't talked with her, talked with her about two and a half weeks ago, Sheri Vora. And depending what COVID does, and maybe Nick knows, they were hoping to be able to have their, uh, Christmas tree sale in a small corner park, which I go where I didn't perceive we'd be any problem with that. I just wanted to update you guys on it. Is that moving forward? Do you know Nick at all, or?
I believe so. I think the trees are supposed to come in the day, like right, weekend after Thanksgiving.
Well, I know last year you didn't have a place to collect the money or anything, so it couldn't happen. All right, Clerk Treasure, any?
Uh, no.
Chief of Police not here, do you have anything, Phil?
No.
Randy's on vacation.
I've talked with Danielle, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Charlie yet, but either next month or right at the first year, we're going to sit down and go through what we can do, based on what you give us and forward that way.
Superintendent, do you have anything?
Uh, just a couple of things. Fall cleanup's been going on, they're doing leaf cleanup, that's gonna continue as, I think it's probably ninety-five percent done now, but we'll continue until the weather tells us we can't. Christmas lights will be going up a week of Thanksgiving, um, the fountain's still not up, um, the contractor that's gonna put it up for us is busy doing cemetery monuments right now. So I'm not sure if it'll be put up this year, if it's not, it'll be put up first thing in the spring, might as well wait. That'll be up.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Capital Future Planet, anything?
Uh, nothing we didn't discuss.
I don't believe Charlie, we have anything?
We were supposed to have a meeting with Colonel, is that, could it get set up? Do you know, Joe?
That's on my, balls in my court on that, I, I'll follow.
Finance.
Uh, audits for the office are added through August. I will get those caught up, uh, if I'm off tomorrow or next week.
We have Ricky's final, Ricky Stan's final paperwork with Danielle, which I haven't had a chance to review yet, uh, as Judge has taken a position which would be, would have been a conflict if she had reached out. Fire Department? Fire Department, uh, don't really have anything to bring up at this point with the Fire Department. I will say, at this time, Sandra Buell, uh, with the county, and I'll do this as part of my county report, has submitted our, our grant, uh, application for next year for Pratt and Ortho. Uh, it's, it's very well written. And I would assume that we stand a very good chance of getting that again. Where that ties in with the Fire Department is, uh, we've discussed this with them, we're hoping that next year, uh, they're gonna open up the department a couple of nights for the kids, and, uh, they're probably gonna have a barbecue or two themselves. And we're currently talking, if we have bad weather, to be able to move it into their banquet area, so that we do not have to cancel a band. So that's, that's working well with the Fire Department. And, uh, they sent out their letters for, uh, their campaign fund drive, and I encourage everybody to do what you think you can do for our Fire Department. And they do a nice job for us.
Police Department, I don't have anything.
Randy's on vacation.
Planning Board, Zooming Board, anything?
Uh, Mickey mentioned the comprehensive plan, uh, draft is out. Um, other than that, Kathy sends out the notices for the next meeting. I don't remember seeing one, but I choose the last Wednesday of the month, so.
Municipal Board?
Not much. I just attended the meeting, and just a normal meeting, there wasn't much going on with it. Town Board meeting will be tomorrow, so I'll go to that.
Town?
Tomorrow, I ain't gonna go.
Tomorrow. Tony?
Nothing, uh, I don't want to argue. There is one thing. Rails to Trails. I'm not sure what's, uh, in the mixture of plans that the county is currently up to, but I think that we need to be involved with discussions as, as I feel they need to be involved with discussions with us on craft, uh, for the transparency issue, because, uh, I want to make sure that whatever happens, uh, is not to the detriment of the, uh, the village. I've heard some things, but at this point, I don't know them to be official, so I'm gonna leave it alone. But I'm, I've shared it with the mayor, and I'm concerned. We're on transparency. I would, I'd request, Mayor, that I be allowed to attend the next meeting with Craft. And I think that's, that it's important that, uh, we can have two members there, or another board member, if not myself. And, uh, so I do request that. And I understand the meeting we had, what, or you had, went well. And I just, I'm concerned sometimes that transparency wise, we sometimes hear some things on the street, and I think it accuses you're not lobbying with me. Well, I'd lobby with anybody to the best of my ability. The signs that went up on, in the parking lot there on the Collins, I took some heat out, I didn't know they were going up. The fencing, I didn't know was going up for the, for downs for the leaf thing, so I don't, I, I just, I just ask somebody to be very careful and transparent, because I, I am out about the community, and I like to be able to answer questions and not say, don't know what you're talking about. But anyways, that's what I, that's it.
Speaking of those, that, have you heard anything more from? Remember you had a couple complaints here, people almost got hit down there. Have you heard anything more since we made those changes?
Crosswalks, we're doing a while there, you know.
And the State Commander James.
People are still turning.
Well, I'll tell you, yeah, but now that we've taken the little crosswalk guy out of the way, people are back to same old, same old, cool, and way down by the Collins and the, I saw it a few times today, but we're not gonna stop, but.
I had cars down there sitting.
A few times.
And I know they did the last one.
Well, they see that light coming up the hill, and that's all they're looking at, you know what I'm saying?
Maybe what we on those, or spikes.
Want some snows on, they're not gonna see that, it's breaking anyway.
I'm half serious, so.
Can't have that thing in the middle of the road in the wintertime.
No, no, they have to be known like number first.
You don't want to buy nothing.
That's why it's not there, that's the other, like, or, or the D O T.
The hang something across the street.
I think the idea is good. I, I have no problem with the idea, like, we should try it, as we are. Just want to make sure that when somebody answers me, I know what they're talking about. And like I said to the person that was very upset, I says, maybe it isn't a good idea, but we're not gonna know until we try it. And from what I can see, other than the, than the people that are still not abiding by it, I think it's good, I really do.
I think for some of that, I think it worked well, with that, you know, crosswalks driving the center there, I think it worked real well.
Once it got straight too, I think it was more.
Yeah, straight, but I think.
Yeah, it was, it made more sense. I think, yeah, when the first things went up, it didn't make a lot of sense to people, just my.
While, while we're talking about traffic too, I think we, we need to have some serious discussions with the state and the school, uh, about Davenport in the morning. It's, it's a bottleneck, and I'm just waiting to see an accident happen there, as people are trying to turn out left. And you got cars backed up all the way around the loop to school, because one car can't get out left. I turn right, period. It's just, it's just safer and cleaner.
Yeah, because you can turn left with the light coming out.
Yeah, you don't have to wait for traffic both ways. And.
Sometimes I, I think the school could correct that problem themselves, if they put the buses back in the fun circle and let the people be back out on the turn, yeah.
Uh, schematically, you might be right, Joe, but I don't, I guess until I heard their, their reasoning, uh, I would say that, uh, uh, maybe, maybe, two things, maybe both things need to happen.
Those upper parking.
Well, I just mean, years ago, when they did that, a member of Lavo used to send police officers up there, three fifteen or so, and they direct traffic, so they let the buses out.
Already drove, you just drive it out.
I think actually, like, be real, I go there in the morning, and it's horrendous to get out, and they got, they got just one driveway wide, but they need three lanes. You can't get out, and I think you got more kids being kicked in school right now.
I would say this year, you got more parents.
Beyond what's a normal year would be.
Okay, moving on, recreation. We already talked about ice skating, hopefully we start in December 3rd. Do you have anything, thoughts on that?
Just a question too, not to keep it on the Rails to Trails, but on the D R I, is that part of that, you were part of that, Joe, is that part, is there anything part of the D R I, the Rails to Trails?
Yeah, there was.
I thought, so.
Basically, one thing they're trying to get there is, well, when we talked to Rails to Trails, it was, Trotty there wants to do the rail bikes pedal, and then he was also hoping to, that's why the one diesel engine stuck out here on, next to the co-op. He brought, he brought that, and he's hoping to get the.
If you do that, how are you gonna have walk trails and, and, and. So what, what's, I, I'm getting all kinds of mixed signals here. I'm being told that we're, we're looking at multi-use vehicle and all that stuff, and first off, who's gonna walk a trail, or who's gonna ski a trail, or who's gonna ride a bicycle on a trail, if you've got?
A lot of people would walk and ski, and cross-country ski on it.
Oh, I get that, but I, I can't imagine anybody's gonna do that if we've got multi-use vehicles on it, or if they do, we're, we're gonna have the wild, wild west.
When we talked this with the D R I, motorized vehicles weren't there.
That's, I was, I was on the assumption of spikes and walking.
That's not the message I get.
They're not even allowed in the village, so.
Um, now, the other hot button issue, that, uh, Double Play does have a meeting tomorrow, it's moved up to Thanksgiving, but, um, really not a lot of movement, I mean, it's still in the works of, as far as the multi-use building. Um, had a good meeting with the county, um, I'm not sure where that's going as far as, obviously, funding's an issue, and I guess I'll leave it at there. One kind of offbeat question that I've got that has to do, not really with the Recreation Commission, but just in general. If we were to have, we don't have a Christmas parade, I think we had one maybe ten years ago. If that was to be organized, would that be something like the Turkey Trap, that we, just somebody organizes it, or the village have to sponsor that, or how would we go about that? I just, just an idea.
I would think any organization that would want to sponsor one.
Right, you want to be saying this, Alfred?
I'm not gonna be, no, no.
Hey, you make.
I'm just, we, there's a lot of communities that have one, that's all I'm saying.
I know Crowe has one, or, or I'm not sure if they're having one this year, but in the past.
The grant was called, that's what's been there. All right.
Okay, now down to Rick Hall.
Well, Mickey let me jump in here. Uh, Timmy and I were on the Zoom meeting last night, and, uh, Katie Malinowski put on a great, great presentation of the economic impact of snowmobiling, the study they did in surveys, and I thought it was really, really good and informational and really enlightening. About four counties, Jefferson, Lewis, uh, Swigel, and Oneida, and the impact it had, and it, it, it broke it down into all sorts of different groups of, um, income, people, levels of the people coming in here and things like that.
Ages.
Ages. I, I thought it was very, very good.
Yeah, it was.
And Mickey's gonna make sure we can get.
And you got the link already sent to you.
So you did.
That was, that was. When I came into the meeting and talked.
So we'll share with the rest of the group here.
No, it was very good.
It was very good. And they are working on a four wheeler, ATV.
Just Louis County.
Just for Louis County.
Yeah, Louis County's working on an ATV one.
What is her footnotes for the financial impact? Is, is that part of what we'll learn, will we watch this, Tim?
What's that?
The footnotes for the, the finances that they, that they, that they are saying they bring, that brings in, so. What, what do they, what do they, what do they use for their statistics?
Just different age groups and stuff like that. I don't know what they use for the.
They did several surveys. There was an online survey, there was.
J C C?
J C C, when I had some students going out on the trails and doing actual surveys of snowmobilers out on the trail.
But when they come up with the figures and it brings, well, let's just use a pilot sky figure, eighty million, what do they use to back and base that up on? Other than, other than what they say, I mean, I'd like to see some actual figures, uh, because, heh, I'm, I'm sorry, I can go on the hill and watch these guys run their business where one night they may not even
I would take that.
Cash register.
If you take the, the sales tax revenue increase. If you take the, the sales tax revenue increase of lodging and everything, that would, that would basically show it right there, I mean.
Yeah, they, they got it broken out, I think, from, well, I've seen the report right from me, but from last night, they had, they did the survey, asked people how much they were spending in the area, and they took that, and then they had calculations that were done, I can't remember the consultant firm, was it Camoyen?
Yeah.
Camoyen, who went and had calculations that they could run that through, that would then give them the financial number about what it's bringing into the area. One of the things was actually Oneida County was a lot higher. But you got to figure, they also have CJ's Motorsports down there selling snowmobile sleds, one sled, you know, is twenty thousand dollars or so, so, you know, they, so you can see where the bump is, where people are kind of buying stuff down there, so, but yeah, that's.
We don't even have a franchise snowmobile dealership in Lewis County?
Does Timber Goose still do it, or? It used to be.
We used to have, we had Mark there too.
And often, he has a.
They need it, they don't do it anymore either.
There's not a franchise snowmobile dealership in Lewis County?
Not to say that it's a debate, but like you said too, there's a direct impact with the people that sell and buy snow sleds outside, and then the indirect, I mean, I'll just give you a quick example, we went up, Michelle and I went up to see her brother who was snow sledding up on Duck Hill. We weren't snow sliders, but maybe that's what you're saying, is how do you know when we go to a restaurant, whether you're a snow slater or not? You know, and we wouldn't have been up there had he not been visiting, so there's all sorts of, there's a not direct impact with it, and then there's the obviously things like the sales or whatever, so, how they get their calculations, I don't know.
Is that it, Tim?
Yep.
All right, Bruce Stell, anybody have anything? If not, we'll go to public comment.
So, did you want to let people know that the first town, village, city, whatever, had gotten the DRI grant, Troy? Did you know that? Troy actually was awarded one of the DRI grants.
Oh, they have it already?
Yes. I thought you knew that.
Must be coming out, but.
Yeah. Online. Because our governor stopped there, I don't know if it was a surprise or whatever, but she just stopped there.
Well, I heard indirectly, and, well, everyone, what the act, looked it out, that the twenty thirty, that one was awarded too, that was presented to New York City too. I heard from a pretty good source that Chinatown got it in New York City, so I heard that, that's where it, from a good source too. I didn't know that one of the other ones had gotten it, because there's ten of them, right?
It depends on whatever region you're in.
Right.
Better cost our toes along with our pictures of this area. All right, public comment, anybody have anything?
Well, I guess I'm here this week, or this month.
Where's your partner?
Henry hasn't been coming the last few times or something.
We didn't even see him in the municipal board meeting the last three months.
I know, I had the stomach flu last month, and I was not capable of coming to the meeting. Danielle, this is kind of with you, I saw the agenda posted on Linkin Lewis County, is that something that is going to be done every month?
I think Linkin Lewis posted, it's on our website, usually like twenty-four hours before the meeting, and then there's always extra copies. I think, Nick, do you do, you post on Linkin Lewis, right?
As long as it's available, it didn't used to be available until like an hour or two before the meeting. But I think something changed a couple of months ago, and then they're there now, so.
Yeah, we try and post it, like, at least, like, a day or two beforehand, so if he has it, then he'll put it on there as well, or can you email to him?
The reason being, I'm glad to see that, I've brought transparency issues up several times with the board about if you don't come here, you don't know what's going on, you know, unless it's word about one of the board members to their friends, to their friends, basically, with a lot of the information, so I'm glad to, glad to see that.
Transparency, transparency is very important. I would have to say that our agenda usually is pretty much the same every month, it's a boilerplate, probably kind of mundane and dumb, but there's always an issue that may come up, so, yeah, that's good. Danielle and Nick, thanks. And that's all I have.
Anyone else have any public comment? All right, Bruce Stell, nothing for executive session, that's somebody here has something to bring up.
I moved to me.
Motion for a adjournment.
Adjournment.
So, all favor?